That's for your comment before. Okay, welcome to the May 18th, 2023 meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Board, and we will now start our meeting with the roll call to account for all our members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Avery.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Heinel.
Aye.
Mr. Hinton. Mr. Halipka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo. Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren. Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you all. Now, can you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the agenda as published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the May 11th, 2023 email, you received draft minutes from the May 4th meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those draft minutes? Are there any additions or changes? If not, may I have a motion to accept the minutes as circulated?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on the major actions of the May 11th, 2023 Landmark Preservation Commission Meeting. Ms. Bensley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our May 11th, 2023 meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue four certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Ferguson property at 786 Glen Avenue in Oella. The Carter property at 608 Milford Mill Road in Sudbrook Park. Paradise Place at Sudbrook, an assisted living facility at 600 Sudbrook Road in Sudbrook Park. And the Fenley property located at 5009 Hazel Avenue in Greenlight. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. Now, can you fill us in on legislation recently passed by the County Council following our last meeting?
I sure can. There's quite a few. Bill 1823 Rental Housing Licenses for the Purpose of a Self-Certification Option for Dwellings with Seven or More Dwelling Units and Apartment Complexes with Less Than Three Health and Safety Violations in the Past Three Years, Providing for an Inspection Process for Dwellings with Seven or More Dwelling Units That Cannot Self-Certify and Apartment Complexes That Cannot Self-Certify, and Generally Concerning Required Inspections for Rental Housing. Bill 2023 Zoning Regulations Uses Permitted in the RC2 Zone Catering Halls Converted From Dwellings for the Purpose of Permitting By Right the Conversion of Dwellings to Catering Halls in the RC2 Resource Conservation Agricultural Zone Under Certain Circumstances, Setting Additional Restrictions and Limitations Under Certain Circumstances, and Generally Relating to Uses Permitted in the RC2 Zone. Bill 2123 Zoning Regulations Uses Permitted in the ROA Zone Interior Design Studio with Retail Sales and as an accessory use to an office use for the purpose of permitting retail sales as an accessory use to an interior design studio office use in the residential office class A office ROA zone, and generally relating to uses permitted in the ROA zone. Bill 2020, Bill 2223 Zoning Regulations Signs Joint Identification Signs on a Wall-Mounted Canopy for the Purpose of Permitting Additional Wall-Mounted or Canopy Joint Identification Signs in Certain Areas of the Towson Commercial Revitalization District and BM Zone, and Generally Relating to Signs. Bill 2323 Planned Unit Developments Provocation of Resolution Approving Continued Review for the Purpose of Permitting the Provocation of a Resolution Approving the Continued Review of a Planned Unit Development within a Certain Number of Days after the Conclusion of the Community Input Meeting, and Generally Relating to Planned Unit Developments. Bill 2623 Development Vesting for the Purpose of Providing Limits on the Vesting of Certain Residential Development Plans Which Receive Growth Allocation, Providing for the Application of this Act, and Generally Relating to Development Review and Approval Processes and the Exploration of the Investing of Development Plans. Resolution 7-23 Adoption 2022 Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, the LPPRP, a Resolution of the Baltimore County, Baltimore County, sorry, a Resolution to Adopt the Baltimore County Maryland 2022 Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan as Amended to the Baltimore County Master Plan 2020. Resolution 8-23 Support Application for Redesignation of the Southwest Enterprise Zone, a Resolution in Support of an Application to the State of Maryland for the Redesignation of the Southwest Enterprise Zone. And finally, Resolution 9-23 Support Application for Designation of Woodlawn Enterprise Zone, a Resolution in Support of an Application to the State of Maryland for the Designation of a Woodlawn Enterprise Zone. And that concludes the report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bensley. May the records reflect that Mr. Hinton also joined the meeting? Well, this is the conclusion of the agenda that we have right now, but we will reconvene at 5:00 for a public hearing on the Master Plan 2030. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll see you all back here in seven minutes.
Nancy, aren't people supposed to stay on this?
Oh, yeah, we're not leaving.
Okay, just make sure people don't clock off.
Just if you want to mute. Yeah, no, the hearing on the Master Plan 2030. The public hearing is now called to order. Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board, and we will now start our meeting with the roll call of the members that are here. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Avery.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Heinel.
Aye.
Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Halipka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo. Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you. If you could please mute yourselves right now, there's back, I can hear some background noise. Thank you. At the May 4th, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board, Ms. Amy Mantey, Deputy Director of the Department of Planning, introduced the Master Plan to the Board for 2030. Tonight, the members of the Department of Planning, including Ms. Mantey, Ms. Jennifer Meacham, and Mr. Chris Weaver, are here to further present the plan to the Board. Following their presentation, Board members will have a chance to ask questions, and Members of the public will have an opportunity to speak on this matter. So please join me in welcoming Mrs. Mantey, Meacham, and Mr. Weaver.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. The Department of Planning is proud to introduce Master Plan 2030, Baltimore County's Ten Year Comprehensive Plan. This evening, I'm joined by Jennifer Meacham and Christopher Weaver. We're going to provide an overview of each of the five sections of the plan. Taylor Bensley will be moving through the Master Plan online as we are presenting. Master Plan 2030 represents the culmination of a lengthy master planning process, which began in the spring of 2021, and included extensive community engagement, recommendations from local experts and stakeholders, as well as deliberation among county agencies and Department of Planning staff. We had four goals in mind as we created Master Plan 2030. Focus on preparing for the future needs of the county, incorporate best planning practices, provide clear implementation guidelines and benchmarks, and create a living document that will evolve throughout the years. The Master Plan provides policies and guidelines for sustaining livable communities and achieving balanced development in Baltimore County. Several mandates, including state and local regulations, affect Master Plan 2030. First, the Baltimore County Charter requires that a Master Plan be prepared and adopted every 10 years. Additionally, details on required and optional contents of the plan are described in the county code. Finally, the annotated code of the Maryland Land Use Article outlines the elements required in most local master plans in the state of Maryland. Related to land use, the Master Plan does not change zoning. Changes to Baltimore County zoning regulations take place during the comprehensive zoning map process, which occurs on a four-year cycle, during which time the county's official zoning map is adopted by the County Council. Additionally, all community plans, which were adopted as amendments to Master Plan 2020, are included in Master Plan 2030 and are incorporated to the extent they are not in conflict with the growth framework. If you attended the public meetings, you may remember the three interwoven themes in the Master Plan 2030, which are equity, being inclusive in our decision-making, ensuring equitable distribution of resources, and creating opportunity for all; sustainability, ensuring the long-term sustainability of the county's infrastructure, and safeguarding the county's ecology and climate; vibrant communities, ensuring that all residents have access to high-quality, accessible, and affordable housing; cultural and recreational opportunities in safe communities while promoting responsible economic development. These themes run throughout the planned elements, particularly influencing the goals and actions that are found in the growth and vision frameworks. In order to incorporate best planning practices, the plan draws heavily from the American Planning Association's report, Sustaining Places: Best Practices for Comprehensive Plans. Throughout the process to develop the Master Plan, we use this report as a guideline and as a source of inspiration. Sustaining Places is a policy document and a tool that focuses on achieving livable, healthy communities in harmony with nature, communities that have resilient economies, social equity, and strong regional ties. This idea has been adapted into the six principles in the Vision Framework. Livable Built Environment, Harmony with Nature, Resilient Economy, Responsible Regionalism, Inclusive Planning, and Healthy Community. The Master Plan, along with other regulatory documents and manuals, is used to formulate policies and decisions for sustainable and equitable development throughout the county. One of the most important roles of the Master Plan is its connection to the implementation of capital improvement program. Reviewed annually, the Capital Improvement Program is a tool for implementing the goals and priorities of the county's Master Plan. The county's Capital Improvement Program is a six-year plan for the construction and maintenance of the county's parks, roads, and bridges, schools, water, and sewer, among many others. Capital improvement planning is primarily used to create a long-term plan for capital improvement projects. It helps bridge the gap between the goals and actions set forth in the Master Plan and the budget process. Master Plan 2030 is organized into four sections: the overview, the growth framework, the place types map, and the vision framework. The overview, where we are now, provides a guide to using the online document and the purpose of the Master Plan, as well as other information such as background on community engagement and commonly used terms. The growth framework is focused on outlining a new approach to growth over the next 10 years. The places types map provides general recommendations for land use, based upon the vision framework goals and actions, as well as the retrofit analysis found in the growth framework. The vision framework establishes the goals for future long-range development of a sustainable Baltimore County. In creating Master Plan 2030, it was planning's intention to shift the Master Plan from a static document completed at a point in time to a living document. We've used an online platform called Story Maps to create the Master Plan. This platform has allowed us to be more creative in formatting Master Plan 2030 than we would have been with a static printed document. It will also allow us to more clearly document and exhibit any updates to the plan as dictated by legislative actions. It's important to note that community engagement has been the foundation of Master Plan 2030. In order to enhance opportunities for engagement as well as transparency in the process, we created online platforms to engage the community. A Master Plan 2030 hub or website was created at the very beginning of this process. The hub provides information such as meeting recordings, information collected from community input, and most recently, it provides a reference guide to refinements to the plan. To date, over 1,200 people have joined the Master Plan Hub. The largest group of those who have joined are 60 to 69 years old. That is followed by the 50 to 59 age group, and then the 40 to 49 age group. 62% of those who have joined indicated that they are white, 28% indicated that they are black or African-American, and 3% stated that they were of Latino, Hispanic, or Spanish origin. And 96% of the people who joined the hub listed English as their first language. We also polled visitors to the site about their relationship to Baltimore County, asking where they live. This is not a complete view of where all participants in the process reside, but a glimpse at representation for people who have joined the Master Plan Hub. As I mentioned, the hub contains information we gathered from the public at meetings and through comments collected in online surveys. During the Phase 1 Community Engagement Listening Sessions, which were held virtually from June to September 2021, we held 50 meetings, had over 1,000 attendees, and gathered over 3,800 comments. The input that was gathered included topics on big ideas and the vision for the local community and the county in the next 10 years. This story map shows the input that was gathered from the participants in those community engagement meetings. The darker the color on the map is an indication of the level of interest by community, and one of the 14 categories we discussed during the engagement meetings. During the Phase 2 Consult and Collaborate Sessions, which were held virtually January to March 2022, we held seven meetings, had over 560 attendees, and received over 1,400 comments. As we heard from communities, there is a desire to establish a measurable implementation plan for the Master Plan. After adoption of Master Plan 2030, an implementation dashboard will be created to show the status of each action. Successful implementation of the Master Plan depends on a coordinated effort by many parties and will be measured through key metrics that are tied to planned goals and associated actions. Each guiding principle in the vision framework has a set of goals. These goals set the stage for future long-range development of a sustainable Baltimore County. Actions are specific tasks for further study and consideration by county agencies to accomplish each goal. Each action has been given an estimated timeframe for initiation and assigned responsible agencies that will help with implementation. A goal can have more than one action. Metrics are key measurements which will show if each goal and associated actions are successfully being implemented. Each goal has at least one metric, but could have as many as three metrics identified to show success. The glossary of commonly used terms is intended to help everyone understand the terms that are used throughout this document. Some of the terms are technical in nature, so as our hope that the commonly used terms will be a useful guide to make the Master Plan easier to understand and more accessible. The vision framework establishes the goals for the future long-range development of a sustainable Baltimore County. As with all sections of the Master Plan, the vision framework draws heavily on the American Planning Association's report, Sustaining Places. As I mentioned earlier, the fundamentals of the Sustaining Places report have been adapted into the six principles of the vision framework. Livable Built Environment, Harmony with Nature, Resilient Economy, Responsible Regionalism, Inclusive Planning, and Healthy Community. Each principle includes goals and supporting actions for achieving sustainable outcomes. I'll touch on a few items in each of these sections of the vision framework. Livable Built Environment is focused on ensuring that elements of the built environment, including land use, transportation, housing, and infrastructure, work together to provide sustainable places with a high quality of life. Because the built environment shapes quality of life for the entire population, sustaining its livability, and ensuring that it functions at the highest level, are primary tasks for any master plan. The Livable Built Environment section has six priorities: land use and development, housing, transportation, infrastructure, community facilities, and historic preservation. Each of the six priorities have a goal and actions. These goals and actions are also outlined in a table at the end of the section that provides metrics for implementation, which will be used after the plan is adopted to track progress on these actions. And just as a point of reference, as you scroll to the bottom of each of the vision framework sections, you'll find a similar table that lists each goal and action and metrics for implementation, in addition to any links related to county plans. Harmony with Nature is focused on ensuring that the contributions of the natural resources to well-being are explicitly recognized and valued, and that maintaining their health is a primary objective. While some natural resources are protected through separate functional plans, the Master Plan sets the framework and direction for protecting, maintaining, and restoring natural systems. The section has four priorities: forest-sensitive areas and land preservation, green network, water quality, and climate resiliency and energy efficiency. The Resilient Economy section ensures that the community is prepared to deal with both positive and negative changes in its economic health, and to initiate sustainable development and redevelopment strategies that foster green business growth and build reliance on local assets. Although there may be some areas with specific economic development strategies, the Master Plan provides an instrument for placing those strategies within the context of broader community development efforts. The four priority areas are: commercial, industrial development and reinvestment, workforce development, tourism, and dismantling barriers to entry. In addition to the goals and actions tied to the four priority areas, there's also a focus on the county's existing commercial revitalization program, which began over 25 years ago. This piece outlines the history of the program and also recommends that the program undergo a comprehensive review in order to ensure the program meets modern needs. Responsible Regionalism ensures that local proposals account for, connect with, and support the plans of adjacent jurisdictions and the surrounding region. From the local government perspective, the plans and policies of adjacent jurisdictions have overlapping impacts in terms of factors such as the location of new development, commuting patterns, and stormwater flows. Therefore, connecting these plans and policies through the Master Plan is a way to manage these and other functions. The five priority areas for this section are: expanding the regional economy, transit network, service delivery, sustainability, community stabilization. Inclusive planning ensures fairness and equity in providing for the housing, services, health, safety, and livelihood needs of all citizens and groups. Three priority areas are data access, community engagement, and capacity building. This section also highlights two initiatives that came out of the Baltimore County's 2021 Efficiency Review. The first is small area plans. One of the efficiencies identified for the Department of Planning was the development and implementation of a systematic approach to completing small area community plans countywide as a follow-up to the Master Plan 2030 process. These plans will build on the work of previously adopted community plans, as well as build on the themes and goals of Master Plan 2030. In recognition of limited staff resources, we've proposed 12 planned boundaries. The smaller plans are intended to provide area-specific recommendations for achieving and refining the goals of the Master Plan. The other recommendation from the efficiency review was the creation of a community planning institute, in order to engage community members in the planning process and develop a strong cohort of well-informed supporters of planning initiatives. The Community Planning Institute has actually already begun. It kicked off this month with sessions once a week for the five weeks of May. Our first classes had 25% participants, which were selected by an application process. And due to a high level of interest, we anticipate holding the next session later this year. Reimagine Security Square is also highlighted within the section. It is a community planning project that began during the Master Plan process. Since opening in 1972, the site has declined and remains underutilized. The vision for redevelopment of the mall site was informed by the reimagine security square charrette that was held on-site in the fall of 2022. The final charrette report will be presented to the public on May 31st and will illustrate a comprehensive plan for future redevelopment of the site. And finally, the Healthy Community section ensures that public health needs are recognized and addressed through provisions for healthy food, physical activity, access to recreation, healthcare, environmental justice, and safe neighborhoods. The Master Plan is the appropriate tool for identifying and mitigating public health hazards and for promoting effective, healthy community goals. This section has four priorities: eliminating health disparities, inclusive public safety, quality public services for all, and recreational opportunities and access. And now, I will turn it over to Jennifer Meacham to walk through the growth framework.
The growth framework outlines the plan for growth in the county over the next 10 years, highlighting place types that set aspirational directions for future development and redevelopment. Planning Board established the Baltimore County Urban Rural Demarcation Line, otherwise known as the Erdle, in 1967. It has divided the county into urban or suburban and rural areas since that time. It's outlined in red here. The division of land allows infrastructure investment and most land development to be focused in the urban or suburban areas, while natural and agricultural resources in the rural areas are protected. As a result of the Erdle, 90% of the county's population resides in 1/3 of the county's land area. By confining much of its growth to a limited geographic area, costs that might have been incurred by extending infrastructure and development are avoided, and 2/3 of the land area is reserved for farming and natural resource conservation. Baltimore County is one of the top 10 counties in the country with over 70,000 acres preserved through land preservation programs. It maintains a diverse agricultural system that contributes millions to the economy. Over 10,000 horses are kept in Baltimore County with an equine inventory value of over $120 million. As the size and amount of undeveloped land within the Erdle diminishes, the redevelopment of underused property at greater densities and with a mix of land use to create compact, walkable, high-density mixed-use communities within the Erdle can encourage economic growth and help pay for infrastructure and services in the future. The county's Erdle was aligned with the state-approved priority funding areas in December of 2020. Any changes to the Erdle now would involve coordination with the state to also change the priority funding area boundary. Similar to the priority funding area, the Erdle is directly related to or helps to define a number of state statutory elements, such as the growth tiers, ag preservation funding certification, rural legacy funding, and water and sewer resources. The very first goal in our Master Plan 2030 vision framework relates to reinforcing the existing Erdle and focusing redevelopment strategies inside the Erdle. The Erdle and the newly proposed place types, which will be discussed later, allow the county to manage growth in a manner that protects important natural resources and agricultural activities, while maximizing the efficiency of county expenditures for transportation improvement, utilities, schools, and other capital projects. With the adoption of Master Plan 2030, Baltimore County will continue to maintain the Erdle, ensuring sustainable development. Baltimore County's development capacity model shows that the number of potential additional units within the Erdle could range from 10,890 units with a moderate build-out scenario to 26,950 units, assuming the full zone build-out. Most lots do not build out to their fullest density, but rather to a moderate density. The current residential building rate is 1,300 residential permits per year for urban areas of the county. If this building rate continues with no change to zoning, the urban area will reach full build-out in eight to 20 years. The growth framework is focused on outlining a new approach to growth in Baltimore County over the next 10 years. This new approach is called retrofitting. Retrofitting means embedding planning principles such as density, walkability, and public space into a well-established patterns of the modern suburban built environment in order to improve the efficiency and well-being of anyone who lives there. The Department of Planning developed a methodology to identify areas in the county that are most suitable for retrofitting, creating the conditions for the next step in the evolution of the suburban landscape. Planning identified locations through Baltimore County using a neutral, data-driven process based on a number of geographic, social, and economic determinants. 27 metrics were identified, which were condensed into seven categories. Weights of 1, 3, or 5 points were assigned to each layer. The layers were then overlaid atop one another. The overlapping area with the highest total score are the resulting core retrofit areas. A work group consisting of Department of Planning staff, including staff and department heads from each of our divisions, Development Review, Community Sign, conducted a series of meetings to discuss and vet the data used in the retrofit mapping analysis and the weights assigned to that data. Planning staff included senior professionals with over 30 years of experience in planning with Baltimore County. This part of the process was also directly informed by our Phase 1 and Phase 2 community engagement meetings, through which we received over 3,800 comments in Phase 1 alone. through which we received over three thousand eight hundred comments in Phase One alone. While it would be impossible to develop a plan which addresses every issue, patterns, priorities, and the overall issues did emerge. Planning staff used these top issues to help identify corresponding metrics as a way to bake the problems into the solution. For example, communities were in support of walkable and pedestrian-oriented infrastructure, and the metrics chosen to evaluate these issues were shown data on high-transit ridership as well as proximity to rail or bus stops with a score of three and five points. Planning staff also made sure to highlight local and institutional assets where commercial and pedestrian activity is generated, along with current land use to accurately portray existing conditions in the county and show which areas could theoretically support more intense uses. After the core retrofit areas were mapped, these areas were reviewed by the planners to determine if the areas were truly areas primed for possible retrofit. Weights were shifted and data layers were removed or added to produce a final map of sites that are truly areas primed for retrofit. There are seven main categories and the twenty-seven data layers that were used for the analysis. This right here shows the demographic status. The bulleted points here show that the GIS data layers that were used for each category and the weights that were assigned. Here is the employment opportunity data layers that were used. Some of these are census tract-based and others are distance-based. Here are some of the county funding resources: land use and ownership, neighborhood assets, neighborhood deficiencies, and finally, transportation access. The final map shows areas with a darker red are those areas that have highest weights. The highest score shown here in red represents the core retrofit areas. The core retrofit areas helped the planning department to map the urban future land use map, which we call the Master Plan 2030 place types. The core retrofit areas and the principal underpinnings of the fifteen-minute city concept were combined to create the new Master Plan 2030 place types map. This concept refers to areas where the surrounding population and dwelling units are within certain walking and biking distances to the core and will support the primary functions therein. A quarter-mile represents a five-mile walk, three-quarter mile represents a fifteen-minute walk, and one mile represents a five-minute bike ride. We begin with the areas that were mapped from the process described above, and these are the core retrofit areas. From here, an eighth-mile buffer was created around those areas, as well as a quarter-mile buffer around existing transit stops and heavily-used bus stops to create a more generalized shapes for which we call the node place type. Different types of nodes will be defined later in the presentation, but the place type node could be an area where a more dense, mixed-use redevelopment could occur. There are several factors that would impact the priority of certain nodes being redeveloped, and some of those include proper infrastructure in place, proper zoning in place, public input, county priorities, county funding, and the willingness of the property owner to develop. The level of redevelopment for each node will be discussed in greater detail and involved public input during the small-area plan process because the mapping analysis was done at a higher level. Therefore, farther site-specific analysis is warranted for the sites identified for retrofit. Next, quarter-mile, three-quarter mile, and one-mile concentric circles were placed at strategic points based on the perceived center of the core retrofit areas. These buffers form the basis for the place type connected neighborhood, which are mapped to correspond with census block group boundaries. The intent is that these areas could support some higher-intense uses and redevelopment due to their proximity to the place type node. Everything else inside the Erdel becomes a place type established neighborhood. The intent is that these areas would remain with the current uses that presently exist. The new rural place types located outside of the Erdel are based on the land management areas from Master Plan 2020. Anything beyond the Erdel is categorized the same as its 2020 designation and mapped to current 200-scale data standards using roads, hydrology, and parcels to define the boundaries. The new classifications are approximately the same: agricultural priority preservation, resource preservation, rural residential, and village changed from rural commercial center. Some areas were reclassified based on ownership: public versus private, state and county parks, current uses residential versus agriculture, and some new villages were added where rural commercial uses currently exist. There are four place types in the rural areas and four in the urban areas. Rural place types are located outside of the Erdel and intended to protect the county's natural resources and agricultural resources. Urban place types are located inside the Erdel and are suburban to urban in nature with each successive type building upon the next. The place type map represents a future land use plan for the county over the next ten years. The place type map is intended to replace the land management area map and the transect map from Master Plan 2020. The new place types map was mapped based around the core retrofit areas and distances from those locations. This new map shows desired land use patterns and land use objectives of Baltimore County in the next ten years. This map does not always represent current conditions because it's a future land use plan. This map is a guide to where growth could occur in the future, but proper zoning must first be in place to enable specific uses. Goal one, action twelve from the vision framework states that the place types map will be periodically reevaluated, and revisions of the map may occur based on analysis or growth and development needs and trends, small-area plan studies, and special area studies. Place type resource preservation: these are designed to protect environmental, historic, and cultural resources while allowing only limited residential, commercial, or institutional development. You can see the primary and secondary uses that are proposed in each for each place type. This does not exclude other uses that are allowed by right due to zoning. Place type agricultural priority preservation: these areas are designed to preserve active agricultural activities and as such are not suitable for dense, residential, commercial, or institutional development. Place type rural residential: this place type allows some areas of limited low-density residential development. Place type village: this type facilitates commercial activities and civic uses at primary road intersections. They primarily serve rural population commercial needs. They are the central locations for civic uses, churches, and community centers. And now for the urban or more suburban place types. Place type established neighborhood: these are suburban neighborhoods generally consisting of moderate density predominantly detached single-family homes built post-World War II that will remain as such for the foreseeable future. The neighborhoods are served with public water and sewer service. Place type connected neighborhood: areas connecting established neighborhoods and nodes where a moderate infill redevelopment could occur. These areas may support a variety of housing types such as detached, single-family townhomes and apartments alongside neighborhood-serving shops and services. These places contain the population needed to support the node which they surround. Place type node: core retrofit areas called nodes are the most strategic locations for retrofitting efforts. They are predominantly located along aging neighborhood centers, major arterials near transit hubs or large gray field sites. Nodes include adjacent residential and commercial properties that support walkable redevelopment with mid-to-high residential densities and a mix of uses that serve the community. Within place type node, Baltimore County has identified four node types: urban node, regional commercial node, neighborhood node, and mobility node. Each has its own characteristics and levels of intervention needed for compact, walkable, vibrant redevelopment. Place type special use: the final suburban place type is a special use type. It includes certain industrial and manufacturing areas but may include limited other uses, including retail. By their function, they require their operations to be separate, except those with similar characteristics. Currently, this designation applies to Trade Point Atlantic and to the proper property known as Lafarge Quarry. The last few sections of the growth framework focus on land use and development process reform. The three main recommendations to the land use processes include realigning the major processes to the following sequence: decennial census, master plan, small-area plans, comprehensive zoning map process, capital improvement planning, and water and sewer plan amendments. This is a typical alignment for a long-range planning process. Modifying comprehensive zoning map process from a four-year to a ten-year cycle. A county-wide operational efficiency review was conducted in twenty-one, twenty-one to assess the structure and function across agencies and departments to achieve cost savings through operational efficiency. One of the proposals in the report was to adjust the frequency of the comprehensive zoning map process from every four years to every ten years to reduce staff time dedicated to the process. The planning department could then align its CZMP with the county's master plan process. This change would produce time savings of nearly fifty thousand staff hours that could allocate to current under-resourced planning functions. Finally, prioritizing the small-area community plans, which Amy previously discussed. During the Master Plan 2030 engagement process, feedback from community stakeholders indicated that the Baltimore County development process needs to be more transparent and that policies need to be reviewed and updated. Master Plan 2030 recommends the following: first, updating the development manuals; second, developing a transit-oriented development strategic plan to increase the use of transit services and connecting jobs, housing, and entertainment and retail; and lastly, to evaluate the current planned unit development process to ensure that is transparent, clearly articulates eligibility requirements, conveys tangible community benefits, and ensures a higher-quality development. This concludes the review of the growth framework, and Chris Weaver will now review the water resource element.
Thank you, Jen. The Water Resource Element, or WRE, is a state-mandated examination of all water resources in Baltimore County. It considers public and private drinking water supplies, wastewater disposal systems, and stormwater runoff from existing and proposed land uses. Intent of the analysis is to ensure safe and adequate supplies of drinking water, adequate facilities for wastewater disposal, protection of high-quality natural resources, and restoration of impaired waterways. Originally developed in response to House Bill 1141 from the 2006 legislative session, WRE assists in protection and restoration of all water resources, including the Chesapeake Bay, and is required part of local land use plans. In 2007, Maryland issued its first guidelines to assist local governments in developing their WREs. Baltimore County's first WRE was submitted to the Maryland Department of Planning in 2010 as part of Master Plan 2020. Since the original guidance was released, there have been substantial changes to Maryland's water resource and environmental programs. Climate change-related issues such as sea level rise, storm surges and flooding, increased temperature, precipitation, and other extreme weather must now be integrated into our future plans. In 2020, the state created a team to recommend updates to the guidelines for local governments. Since the data analysis enacted in the Master Plan 2020 WRE are still applicable, reanalysis is not required. This WRE serves to address new issues introduced in the state's updated guidance. Baltimore Metropolitan Council's most recent Round Ten Population and Households Forecast estimates that in 2035, eight hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight people will live in the urban areas in Baltimore County, while eighty-five thousand seven hundred and two people are expected to live in the rural areas. The Master Plan 2020 WRE from 2010 stated that there will be adequate public water and sewer to serve a 2035 projected urban population of eight hundred and ten thousand four hundred and eleven. Since the land use recommendations proposed in Master Plan 2030 will be incrementally implemented, the effects of the projected population increase within the next ten years will be too small to outpace expected water and sewer capacity. This map of the water master plan designations shows the areas of current planned or no public water service in the county. Similar to the water service map, the sewer master plan designations map shows areas of current planned or no sanitary sewer service. Baltimore County's Water Supply and Sewerage Plan 2020 triennial review provides a more detailed study on water and sewer infrastructure. This will soon be updated with the 2023 triennial review. This WRE recommends that the county work with Baltimore City to determine whether any parts of the sewer system might experience greater infiltration and inflow or INI due to age and potential effects of climate change. Increased INI could reduce wastewater treatment plant or collection capacity. Within the Erdel, the Master Plan 2030 Growth Framework calls for growth to be guided by a retrofitting model, which Jen just explained, which should improve stormwater runoff quality due to state redevelopment requirements. Redevelopment will either contribute to or have no impact on meeting total maximum daily load or TMDL goals for impaired receiving waters, nor will it increase threats to healthy receiving waters. Redevelopment is expected to reduce the quantity of stormwater runoff. Since most redevelopment occurs at sites without stormwater management facilities, new stormwater management facilities for the reduction of impervious surfaces will lower runoff quantities. Stormwater runoff quality and quantity improvements are important given the more intense storms and increased precipitation expected as a result of climate change. Outside the Erdel, development on individual septic systems is expected to continue with a forecasted population increase of three thousand four hundred and eighty-six in rural areas between 2020 and 2035. This translates to about one thousand three hundred and seventy-eight additional rural households with new septic systems and additional stormwater runoff from new impervious surfaces. Next, here are the high-quality or Tier Two catchments along with impaired receiving watersheds to give an idea of the number of impairments hindering those watersheds. To protect high-quality Tier Two receiving waters as growth continues, this WRE recommends employing all applicable regulations to minimize pollution. These could be forest conservation and stream buffers, Chesapeake Bay critical area, stormwater management, resource conservation zoning, or other methods. This WRE also recommends exploring impervious surface and pollution load offset requirements to mitigate any impacts of development in high-quality watersheds. Reductions in pollution loads are needed to meet Chesapeake Bay and local TMDL requirements for impaired waters. To ensure we are meeting TMDLs for impaired receiving waters as growth continues, this WRE recommends the county continue to track pollution load reductions within the county's stormwater and septic system sectors as described in our TMDL implementation plans and required by the municipal separate storm sewer system or MS4 permit. Additionally, this WRE recommends the county identify and evaluate methods for tracking pollution load reductions from the agricultural and wastewater sectors and pollution load reductions from neighboring counties and MS4 permittees to inter-jurisdictional watersheds. Within the Erdel, the Master Plan 2030 Growth Framework calls for growth to be guided by the proposed retrofitting model. In certain circumstances, redevelopment may increase stormwater runoff volume. The WRE recommends that county agencies identify where flooding might increase as a result of redevelopment over time. This WRE also recommends that the county determine what can be done to help protect homes located in the breach inundation area of any dams. Dam breaches are addressed in Baltimore County's Hazard Mitigation Plan 2021 update. Department of Public Works Transportation and Emergency Services and Emergency Management both track stormwater drainage and flooding issues. The county also periodically completes a stormwater drainage assessments, assets assessment. A new stormwater drainage asset management, or SDAM, system is being developed for countywide implementation over the next decade. Flooding incidents are tracked and will help inform the SDAM scores. County will also continue to identify and address flooding issues through the County Baltimore County Nuisance Flooding Plan, Regular Hazard Mitigation Plan Updates, and Adoption of Stormwater Management Ordinance Changes in response to upcoming state stormwater regulation and design standard updates. In April 2021, Baltimore County Climate Action Plan was completed. Plan includes analysis of expected climate change impacts on all county-owned assets, including risks to the stormwater drainage network and sewer pump stations. It identifies the most critical issues and risk factors and provides specific recommendations on standards and procedures as well as capital projects moving forward. Climate change is expected to increase the intensity, duration, and frequency of storms, which will increase flooding. Baltimore County is working with the Maryland Department of the Environment to understand and mitigate these impacts through the Advancing Stormwater Resiliency in Maryland Program. The WRE recommends implementation of resilience assessment strategies and projects, including completing cost-benefit analysis as needed to inform decision-making. Baltimore County has met the state's requirements to the degree possible, given limitations of cost and time. The WRE recommends that county agencies identify and address data gaps, issues, and needed studies and analyses as recommended by the state's WRE guidance update. The Master Plan 2030 Implementation Framework will be created after the plan is adopted by the Baltimore County Council and will include strategies from the WRE and progress tracking. Now back to Amy for the next part of our presentation. Now back to Amy for the next part of our presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Before we conclude our presentation this evening, I would like to move to the draft document refinements page on the hub. This is where we're keeping track of input we've received on the draft as being presented this evening. This page documents all changes that have been made, providing the suggested change, the original language in the plan, and the new language, as well as a link you can use to quickly jump back to that spot in the plan. From April 3rd to 14th, we held an open comment period on the master plan. During that time, we received 184 comments. We've reviewed, we've reviewed those comments and made edits to the master plan draft. About 50% of the comments we received did not pertain to the master plan or related to locally focused issues. Those will be addressed during the small area plan process I described earlier. The remaining 50% of the comments were considered and added, all or in part, to the draft that is being presented this evening. This concludes our presentation on Master Plan 2030. Just a reminder, the Planning Board's Work Session on Master Plan 2030 will be held on June 1st, and the Planning Board vote is scheduled for June 15th. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Ms. Mantey and Ms. Meacham and Mr. Weaver. We appreciate the comments. Amy, would you mind reiterating all the opportunities the Planning Board members have to ask more questions?
So yeah, so obviously this evening, there's an opportunity to ask questions if you want to do it before the public hearing portion, if you want to hold your comments and let the public speak and then ask questions then, and of course, at the work session on June 1st.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mantey. I appreciate that. Now, board members, if you have any questions, if you have more than two, I ask you that you only ask two at a time to give all the board members an opportunity to speak. You'll be able to ask as many questions as you want, but just two at a time, please. Who would like to start with the first question? Mr. Avery.
I just wanted to say we really appreciate the presentation. Well done, and I know, we know that it takes a whole lot of dedication and hard work. And we appreciate every role that you play. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. Next, Mr. McGinnis.
Very good report. I think that there was not enough emphasis on the importance of food grown in the, in the county, both the quantity and the quality of food that would be necessary for emergency situations or just general situations. I think that could be a little more emphasis.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Any other questions at this time?
I do. It's Chris Haver.
Mr. Haver?
This is a question to Mr. Weaver. You had mentioned something about data from 2010 being reused in 2020 or something like that. Could you, could you clarify kind of what, 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 what that statement was that you made and why that decision was made?
So we have a series of workshops with the various agencies here in the county and with people at the state level who basically wrote the guidelines. So through those workshops, it was determined that we didn't necessarily need to reinvent the wheel. We just needed to sort of update, update our wheel. I guess that's akin to just putting new tires on it, but not making a new wheel. So the, the original WRE from 2020, the Master Plan 2020, is linked in our story map. It's probably hard to see when we were scrolling through it. But the original document is very expansive and way more detailed than the state expected to see from us again. And it was determined that the, I guess, accommodations written into that plan were good enough for now still. We didn't really need to go through and rehash all of it.
Yeah, the only thing that concerns me, and I'm not even sure if this is part of what you were talking about, is that when you talk about infiltrate into the waterways, especially down here in the Southeast Side, a lot has changed in terms of the quality of the water over 10 years with the closing of the steel mill and all of the investments the Trade Point Atlantic have put into environmental remediation. And so if we're carrying data that creates a certain narrative that's now 13 years old, we're never going to see improvements because we keep carrying through aged data that, 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 that demonstrates a different narrative. And so to the extent that those data that are being shown in that report are dated, I think that new water quality studies need to be conducted to see just where we are and not rely on 13-year-old data.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Haver. Any other questions from the board? Not hearing any others? Then, thank you all. We will now begin our public testimony for members of the public who do not wish to speak, but would like to submit a comment. You, you can do so in the chat feature. Please send your message to the host. The host will copy the comments and email them to all the board members. We will now call on all of you that have completed the online registration posted on the board's website to speak on this topic. Speakers will be called in the order you are registered. Ms. Bensley, are you ready for our speakers?
I sure am. Our first speaker is Isaac M. Bruzo. Speakers, I will go ahead and make you a panelist when I call on you. Then you will have the option to turn on your video if you wish to do so. And then I will move you back down to an attendee once you're finished speaking. And we do have a timer. We're just working on getting that pulled up. Jessica, if you could share your screen whenever you're ready.
Speakers, you have two minutes to speak. If you have any additional testimony, you can send it to the host and we'll be sure that we read it.
And Mr. M. Bruzo, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Chair Haver, of the Baltimore County Planning Board. I'm here representing the Maryland Building Industry Association, which represents 268 businesses and thousands of employees across the county. MBIA is testifying in opposition to the current draft Master Plan 2030. As the largest building and development trade association in Maryland, we feel it is incumbent on us to point out the flaws in the plan and its inherent hostility to development and growth across the county. Our Baltimore County chapter of the MBIA spent extensive time reviewing and commenting on this plan and has submitted a letter outlining our complete comments prior to this meeting. I cannot cover all the points in that letter in the two minutes allotted to me here, but I respectfully, respectfully request that you refer to the letter for more extensive comments. This plan fails to address or even identify the lack of developable land in the county. The plan creates roadblocks for housing by recommending less frequent rezoning opportunities and overhauling the PUD process to make, make it even more cumbersome than the already existent, slow, and inefficient process. Baltimore County faces a growing housing shortage, and the existing regulatory framework is already insufficient for addressing this need. The plan also calls for very little new development inside the Erdle, despite the purpose of the establishment of the Erdle to be to direct development to that area. Considering the development restrictions that exist for projects outside the Erdle, this seems a significant oversight that will only exacerbate the county's chronic housing shortage. A major theme of this plan is vibrant communities and ensuring all residents have access to high-quality and accessible healthcare. And the plan cites that Baltimore County only has 8.4 years of possible development under the current zoning regime and calls for further zoning restrictions. This implies that the county expects to be fully built out and meet its housing shortage in that period, which is an unrealistic expectation under the current rules and even more so under the new rules proposed in Master Plan 2030. We recommend that a work group be established in order to improve the plan with industry and community experts to recommend change to the plan and meet county goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And speakers, please remember to provide your name, and if you do represent an organization, please, please let us know what organization you represent. Ms. Bensley, the next speaker.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Marsha McLawland.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm trying to start video, but it doesn't want to do it. At any rate, I'd like to commend the Planning Department's staff for a huge effort. Baltimore County is a very large jurisdiction and has a long history of development, which is challenging. They include many things that we're grateful for, that we're going to continue to protect the Erdle, protect agricultural resources, rural watershed properties, and directing growth to retrofit and redevelopment. It's difficult. It's much harder to do redevelopment than it is to do greenfield development. So I understand the MBIA's concern that they're going to have to shift strategies. However, it is the right way to go in this direction. Another point I'd like to make that's a strong point for the master plan is that it talks a lot about environmental features, but they're put in the last section. Most people are not going to read the master plan in its entirety. If they read anything, they're never going to get to the environmental issues at the end. So I wish that they had been located further in the front to help make the rationale. But unfortunate part is that the implementation strategies and priorities are not part of what you're looking at right now. And I think that's a real challenge. Mostly because the mapping that was done, which is very extensive about retrofit opportunities, is extensive. It affects many, many areas. And I, I think that it's important that citizens understand when retrofit is likely to be targeted at their neighborhoods. I want to use my remaining time to raise a major caution related to this that could disrupt master plan adoption, let alone implementation. My, my neighborhood is Lutherville, and we're in the midst of a gigantic controversy about a proposal to redevelop an old unsuccessful property next to the Lutherville Light Rail Station. It should be a no-brainer. It's right next to Lutherville Light Rail. It should be redeveloped as a mixed-use transit-oriented development. However, there are signs in the neighborhood that have popped up that say, no apartments, no compromise. And just public
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. If there's anything you'd like to submit to the board, would be happy to look at it.
Next up. Next up, we have Michael Sapannak. I apologize if I pronounced that wrong.
Yep, I'm here. So my name is Michael Sapannak. I live in District 3 in Conkeysville. And I just wanted to say thank you for the effort put into the draft master plan. Overall, I think it is very well done, and I have two points to make. So point one, I very much agree with many of the ideals presented in the plan, adding missing middle housing types and making the built environment less hostile to pedestrians and encouraging mixed use and mixed income development. They're all on point to me. However, I feel that the focus on suburban retrofitting, it's not going to yield those ideals. If executed as presented, the county would end up, end up being dotted with isolated pseudo-urban islands and strips. And given that the nodes are focused on large parcels of land with single entity ownership, the result of any retrofitting won't be akin to today's successful and thriving urban areas as those developed and evolved incrementally over time and were the result of many hands. So further, the retrofit concept needs to be bolstered with widespread allowances for A, gentle and gradual buy-right densification throughout the Erdle, and B, establishing commercial businesses and storefronts throughout residential neighborhoods, whether they be connected or existing. So point two is whether this CZMP happens every 10 years, four years, or even every year. It only changes the zoning classification assigned to individual parcels. In contrast to that, what we really need is every 10 years, a comprehensive zoning code revision process. The county zoning code is overly complex, onerous to understand. It should be completely revised and simplified. We should follow Buffalo's lead here, which completed a similar rewrite several years ago, switching to a form-based code along the way. And by most accounts, the result has been a resounding success, including a population increase for the first time in 70 years.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your comments. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Rob O'Miller. O'Miller?
Rob O'Miller? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Rob O'Miller, and I am a Baltimore County resident and local real estate professional. The proposed master plan acknowledges that the county is quickly becoming fully built out inside the Erdle. This has already led to skyrocketing, rocketing housing costs and more recently, the decline in county population as growth is pushed to surrounding areas. The plan proposes that future growth in the county must come from retrofitting or redevelopment. While the plan identifies the areas theoretically best suited for redevelopment, the plan hasn't studied these areas to determine if they have the infrastructure, land availability, or community support to accommodate redevelopment and increased density. This is proposed to be done after the plan is passed with small area plans. My fear is that due to the lack of infrastructure, limited school capacity, and other, and community opposition, these retrofitting areas will be unable or unwilling to accept growth. This would leave the county with virtually no opportunities for future housing or economic growth over the next 10 years and result in a further decline of housing affordability, population loss, and less economic opportunities for residents. I applaud the plan for its goals of providing affordable housing, missing middle housing, and land for employment needs. However, the specifics of the plan provide no proven strategies to meet these goals other than potential retrofitting within very limited areas. I believe the proposed master plan requires further thought and consideration of the land challenges facing our county so that it can properly plan to address our county's many future needs. Additionally, the plan should be revised to incentivize retrofitting within the core retrofitting areas while also making clear that development outside of these areas is not prohibited or in conflict with the master plan. Lastly, I'd like to state that I fully agree with all the concerns raised by MBIA in its letter to the Planning Board regarding the proposed plan. I encourage you to seriously consider the letter as it thoughtfully outlines major concerns with the proposed plan and its potential long-term negative economic effects on the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Mr. Adam Rosenblatt.
Mr. Rosenblatt?
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you, everybody, for your time. My name's Adam Rosenblatt. I'm an attorney at Venable Law Firm. And some of you know that before joining this firm, I worked for eight years for Baltimore County Government as an Assistant County Attorney and as an assistant to the former Director of PAI. And I helped draft and implement a lot of the policy for that department. And I take the land development process in Baltimore County very seriously. I have a deep care and appreciation for this process. And through working on Master Plan 2020 and seeing that plan in action, I've seen a lot of the pros and cons, positives and negatives of that plan. So very invested in this process. You will hear from some of my colleagues about the specific issues that we see with Master Plan 2030, but I want to focus my remaining time on the process by which this plan made its way to the board. And with all due respect, there has not been sufficient public input from the people this plan matters to the most. So after it took years to come up with this plan, the public was given a timeframe of two weeks and a maximum of 1,000 characters to comment on this plan. It's simply insufficient. It's troubling to see that the Planning Board meetings were set where the final version of the plan was to be presented and voted on that was already set by the time that the public was given a draft of the plan. And it, it gives the stakeholders the impression that the county is collecting comments for the sake of checking a box and will not give any meaningful consideration to them. We constantly hear the buzzwords transparency and inclusive process, but it frankly does not feel like any legitimate considerations being given to the people who will be working with this plan the most. Instead, we have government employees and have a lot of respect for the people from the Planning Department that are here tonight and worked with them for many years. But we have a number of very new to government county employees that are making decisions and comments on this plan that feel often arbitrary and yet will control the land development process for the next decade or so. It's our suggestion for the reasons you'll hear that the board delay its vote or send this plan back to the department for further revisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next, we have Chuck Connor.
Mr. Connor?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chuck Connor. I too am an attorney at Venable Law Firm. And my main comment this evening is that the story map format that we've been presented with is unworkable. In the PDF form, the Master Plan 2030 is 134-plus pages. This PDF, however, is not reflective of the over 5,000 pages contained in the online story map format, which is proposed to be the final version of the plan. This story map has layers of hidden data and thousands of hyperlinks to both county-generated and, more importantly, third-party documents. This amorphous form- This amorphous format will make it almost impossible to demonstrate plan consistency. As further evidence of the unmanageable nature of this format, the plan has been changed since its initial release on April 3rd, as reflected on the master plan hub. The public and the planning board has no way of knowing what the Department of Planning is proposing or what exactly makes up the master plan 2030. All external hyperlinks, whether to county documents, and again, more importantly, third-party material, should be removed and the final plan should be in a PDF format that is both easy to review and cite. Further, earlier this week during normal business hours, both the story map format and the PDFs failed to load and were unavailable. This is not only problematic compared with a published document that you know is going to be changed without notice or suddenly become unavailable. So again, both for consistency and ability to cite moving forward, we really do believe that this plan should not be in the story map format, but should be in something that is more concrete. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Noreen Badwe. Badwe?
Ms. Badwe?
Hello. Here's my video isn't working. My apologies. My name is Noreen Badwe, and I work at Venable. I'm speaking today to share how there appear to be substantial issues with the data and methodology application in the place types map. I have a background in data analytics and GIS, and I have spent hundreds of hours analyzing the data that was used to create the draft master plan. I have probably cited this plan more than anyone else apart from the planning staff. The growth framework section describes the mapping methodology used to create the place types map. After analyzing the data, I have found occasions where the place types map may be based on incorrect data or methods. Examples of this include the apparent use of both current and outdated data, including 2010 census data, the deletion of certain data within a set without explanation, and the selective use of specific versus general data depending on the circumstance. Also, this data methodology does not appear to be consistently applied. In applying the methodology, some areas that received a high retrofit score, meaning they should be slated for high-density mixed-use development and categorized as nodes, are deleted from the map without explanation and become established neighborhoods, a more static, lower-intensity category. Given this, it is concerning that this tool could be used to limit potential, limit development potential. When comparing the place types map to the equivalent maps in the 2020 master plan, the amount of area inside the urdle proposed to be labeled as established neighborhood, the most restrictive category, is nearly double. The urdle has a clear purpose. Inside of it, development is permitted and should not be restricted by proposed mapping methodology, which can be imperfect. Given that the place types map is the backbone of the master plan 2030, we would request and welcome the opportunity to discuss these current concerns in greater detail with interested members of the planning board, as well as with the planning staff so that we can all be certain of the quality and reliability of the data and methods upon which these maps have been created. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badwe. Next speaker, please.
Next is David Karceski.
Hello. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is David Karceski. I'm a land use attorney with Venable LLP. The master plan 2030 encourages redevelopment in certain areas, but calls for changes to zoning and development process that would stunt growth and redevelopment. The plan acknowledges that under current zoning, the county has limited raw land available for redevelopment, yet calls for restriction on rezoning and limitation on development, both of which are inconsistent with the need. Two examples of this are the proposed, proposal to reduce the frequency of the CZ, CZMP process from four to 10 years and to revamp and further complicate the PUD process. Both of these are critical tools for retrofitting and redevelopment within the urdle. Changing these processes would limit it, would limit the county's ability to be flexible and to adapt to changes in the market and would have a crippling effect on the county's ability to promote growth throughout the duration of this plan. And doing so is completely inconsistent with other stated goals of the plan, including having a resilient economy, encouraging commercial and industrial redevelopment and investment, allowing for higher density, walkable mixed-use developments. We cannot expect investment to be made when the tools necessary to facilitate it are taken away. The timing of this CZMP process must be left at four years for each cycle, and the PUD process should be left intact. Allegations that the PUD process is not transparent is untrue. The duration of the process for a PUD and the legal requirement to engage the community at all stages on multiple occasions ensures that the community has a meaningful seat at the table throughout the entire PUD process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Karceski. Next speaker.
Next, we have Chris Mudd.
Mr. Mudd?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear. Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the planning board. I'm Christopher Mudd. I'm an attorney at Venable. Sometimes it's lost on planners and politicians that the master plan is utilized under the law to set the boundaries for land development. Some want to say that the document is just a guide, but the law requires that land use decisions must comply with the plan. Therefore, in development projects, even ones that are fully supported by the planning staff and council members, people who are opposed to the project will attempt to utilize the master plan and the precise language within it as a weapon to fight development. If any single aspect of the plan is alleged to be inconsistent with the master plan, the opponents will seize on that language and attempt to kill a development project that may be fully supported otherwise. This highlights the importance of being mindful of the precise language within the master plan. And when the plan calls for retrofitting or redevelopment only in certain selected areas and states that there should be quote little if any new development, end quote, inside the urdle, language like that can and will be used by opponents of good projects to suggest that projects should be denied for lack of conformance with the master plan. To that end, any specific reference to limitations on new development or any specific language that appears to direct development to a particular area to the exclusion of others must be removed. Instead, redevelopment in the selected area should be encouraged through prioritization and/or incentives. And clear language should be added and repeated throughout the plan that growth and development may occur anywhere within the urdle and in certain areas outside of the urdle where zoning would permit it. Similarly, language should be added to the plan to repeatedly confirm that the place types map is aspirational and may not be used to limit or to restrict uses and/or development that is otherwise consistent with zoning and with other applicable regulations. The transect maps from master plan 2020 have been repeatedly utilized by opponents of good projects and projects supported by the Department of Planning to suggest that a proposed development that did not fit squarely within the limited definition of a particular transect should not be permitted.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Thank you for your time. If there's any other comments you have, if you could send it to the board.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Patsy Malone.
Ms. Malone?
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to speak because I'm concerned about the draft plan and the fact that it seems to cater to an anti-development special interest group. The highlighted feedback, for instance, seems to lead towards an anti-development bias. One particular quote that jumped out at me when I read it is the one accusing the council of quote, playing with the regulations to allow for development. It seems strange to have included such a disrespectful quote. I understand that it's now proposed to be removed, but it was in there in the first place. Certain action items leaned heavily in favor of these special interests as well. One example is the one-off discussion of the Middle River redevelopment area in the vision framework section. This discussion advances or advocates for a small area plan. No other area of the county is specifically called out other than the Middle River area. I believe this discussion was added at the request of the local civic group. I also note that this area is inconsistent with the draft small area plan boundary that Amy displayed earlier. In the growth format section, the growth framework section, the plan mentions the LaFarge quarry. This project is one of only two mentioned in the plan, the other being traced by the man. Can only assume that the LaFarge quarry discussion was also added at the request of the same Middle River civic group who is actively opposing a proposed development on the LaFarge property. A representative of that group actually suggested to me that language will be added to the plan before adoption, requiring additional community outreach for the LaFarge property before any development could be proposed. Using the master plan to delay or stop a development at the request of a specific group is not appropriate. The master plan should take a more balanced and unbiased approach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. Next speaker, please.
We have David Thaler.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Thaler.
Thank you. My name is David Thaler, and I am a principal and managing member of DS Thaler and Associates, a civil engineering and land use firm that has been working in the county for nearly 50 years. I'm very concerned about some elements of the proposed master plan. It reminds me of generals who are preparing to fight the last war instead of the next. I also believe it is founded on a false premise. In this week's sun paper, the county executive speaking about the master plan said the county is quote, "growing rapidly," unquote. It is not. Based on data from Zonda, the former metro study who compiled such things, in 2022, there were a total of 335 new housing permits issued in Baltimore County, 294 single-family and townhouse, and 41 multifamily. Prince George's County, only slightly larger than Baltimore County, on the other hand, issued a total of 5,928 permits in 2022 compared with Baltimore County's 335. The 10-year average for permits issued in Baltimore County is 1,241, and in 2015, there were 49 active for-sale communities in the county. Now there are but 19. The county has a population of just about 850,000, and this means there is approximately one new housing permit for every 2,500 people. This is way too low and will seriously affect the health of the county, if not reversed. If you don't add to the housing supply, the county's workers and young people will leave, having been priced out. The urban rural demarcation line, the urdle, was set up to protect rural areas but to provide for development inside the urdle. I think the master plan needs to be revised to more encourage that inside-the-urdle development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thaler. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Next, we have Jason Vettori.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Vettori.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name's Jason Vettori. I'm an attorney with Smith Gill Day &amp; Schmidt. And I do appreciate all the work that went into this document. I think there's a lot of good aspects to it, and it can be built upon. But the bottom line is the present format of the master plan 2030 fails to include state mandated requirements, needs to either be rewritten or alternatively revised or amended. There's codified provisions in the county in the charter in Section 523 and in the county code, Section 32-2-202, that state what's supposed to be in a master plan, but the state enabling legislation, the land use article, the annotated code, says that comprehensive plans, in our case, the master plan, need only be revised or amended every 10 years if it's necessary. And that's in land use articles 3-301 and 1-416. Somewhat out of order, I'm just going to point out that in 2013, the House Bill 409 increased review period for comprehensive plans to 10 years from six years. So that's a recent addition of coming up with this master plan. The applicable sections provide that the planning commission, or in our case, the board, shall review the comprehensive plan and, if necessary, revise or amend the comprehensive plan to include certain elements laid out in Section 1-406 of the land use article and visions in Section 121 of the land use article. The emphasis here is on if necessary, and to a lesser extent, whether the plan needs to be completely written or simply revised or amended. The plan needs to include these elements and visions, which it presently does not. And this draft master plan needs to be written because it does not include the required visions and elements for a comprehensive plan. The recently enacted Town of Bel Air comprehensive plan, which is easily found, if you Google it, should serve as a model of sorts regarding what should be included Baltimore County's master plan 2030. And those land use elements are a development regulations element. There's really no mention of changing regulation-sensitive areas element, transportation element, and water resources element. And I don't see any direct calling out. And if you look at that other plan in Bel Air, you'll see where it's really stated pretty obviously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Eric Rockel.
Mr. Rockel?
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Rockel, and I'm the Vice President of the Greater Timonium Community Council. Due to time limitations, I urge the board to read my full letter, which further explains the rationale behind these comments. I could not disagree more with the master plan's proposals for the Lutherville Timonium area. I find that the three core retrofit areas as proposed in the plan place too much emphasis on and too much idol, idealism related to the light rail line, transit usage in Baltimore County. And for that matter, the whole nation is down. And I don't think it's going to be coming back in the way that existed prior to COVID. And my letter outlines some more about that. The three retrofit areas prescribed for the Lutherville Timonium area also concern me because of their shape and their influence. For example, the northern and central areas include parts of what is west of I-83. Now, the residents that live in those areas west of I-83 are never going to find a walkable nexus with the development area on the east side of I-83. Similarly, in the southern node, which is centered on West Ridgely Road, that node extends down into the historic National Register Historic District for Lutherville. Is the plan suggesting that that area should be redeveloped? I think not. I hope you'll look at my letter and consider all the points I'm making. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rockel, and we will take a look at your letter. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have David Murphy.
Evening. My name is David Murphy. I'm a Vice President and Partner with Elm Street Development, residential land development company with active projects here in Baltimore County. I'm testifying today in opposition of the current draft of master plan 2030, which I believe will create unnecessary barriers, barriers to addressing the county's significant housing shortage and affordability problem. I'm concerned that while the master plan promotes redevelopment in core retrofit areas, something I personally support and our company supports, it doesn't offer viable solutions to addressing the challenges the developers face in trying to actually develop in these areas. Without the tools, zoning, and other measures in place that support redevelopment in core retrofit areas, I believe the master plan significantly overestimates the density that can actually be achieved. Further, I'm concerned that in an attempt to promote redevelopment in these core priority areas, barriers are being created to deter development outside of these areas. By broadly designating place types to large areas within the county, the master plan often mischaracterizes individual properties or subareas, many in conflict with its underlying zoning, which undermines their intended development potential. This is something that must be addressed if we have any hope of addressing the significant housing shortage and affordability issue facing Baltimore County. I ask that the planning board recommend revisions to the master plan that acknowledge the land use constraints of our county, provide solutions that address redevelopment's challenges so that those projects may be viable, and does so without creating unnecessary barriers to economic growth and development outside the core retrofit areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Pat Keller.
Mr. Keller?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Pat Keller. I'm President of the Perry Hall Improvement Association. Congratulations to Director Lafferty, Deputy Director Mantey and staff and the planning board as well for putting forward this very creative and innovative master plan. So some, some thanks goes to you for all that. Two items in specific. First, and this should be relatively easy, rename the master plan to 2033, not 2030. And then henceforth, when the 10-year master plan comes up, the census data will be available for that. And be mindful that has never happened in the past. And be mindful that has never happened in the past. Maybe we could take advantage of this delay and use it to the county's advantage. Item two is the land use place types, very innovative, very creative. The implementation is to come through the small area plans. The issue that we have, and this may sound contrary to developers who find it too specific, communities find it actually too general. So more detail on this is really needed in these place types if we're going to go into the CZMP in the fall and subsequent years, as well as for development review. So communities, developers, people are going to need more specific definitions of these place types. For instance, what is meant by low, medium, or high density? That pretty much, that's it for me. Hopefully, you all have a great evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Michael Greenspun.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Greenspun, and I've been a developer in Baltimore County for 22 years. The master plan 2030 is an ambitious plan that has elements I support and issues that concern me. My overarching problem is the master plan 2030 must clearly state it lays the framework, develops concepts, and provides guidance for the implementation of those concepts. But until zoning and development regulations are legally adjusted as a result, the master plan must not be a binding document upon development. This is because, one, the master plan is expected to be a dynamic document that is updated regularly, but how can development possibly adhere to a moving target? Two, the growth framework lays out an aspirational plan of action and will be followed by small area plans and the CZMP. These future processes will give life to the master plan's intentions as best as the real world allows, given development constraints and community involvement. Only then should the zoning outcomes be binding on development. Three, the vision framework lays out an extremely ambitious wish list for future development, much of which may not come to fruition for a while, if ever. Thus, the master plan development standards should be for generalized guidance and not mandatorily applicable to development until specifically passed into law by the county council. Lastly, the master plan 2030 should acknowledge what many other jurisdictions have finally come to realize, which is that the lack of housing in general and the shortage of affordable housing and reasonably priced market rate housing in particular are primarily due to decades of restrictive government housing policy that placated local residents in the short term but decimated the housing supply balance in the long term. No master plan can truly claim to be an aspirational planning document without acknowledging and proposing to address those supply problems. The master plan 2030 does state that the need for missing middle housing must be addressed, but little is actually done to address it. Other concepts being considered across the country, including Arlington, Virginia, and Montgomery County to confront housing shortages, such as allowing missing middle housing in all single-family zones, are not even considered in this master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenspan. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Bob Benler.
Mr. Benler. Mr. Benler, are you with us?
Hello.
There we are.
Yes.
Hello.
Yes, Mr. Benler. We hear you. Yes, we can.
My name is Bob Benler, and I am the president of the Essex River City Council, which is an umbrella group representing approximately 20 community associations in the Essex River area of Baltimore County. First of all, I'd like to thank Steve Lafferty and the staff for recognizing the various recommendations that the civic council made about a year or so ago. The vast majority have been addressed in this document, and we very much appreciate that. I have one area of grave concern to us, and it has to do with the place designations. Specifically, I'm dealing with the place designation of special use, which is applied to Trade Point Atlantic, a major, major development in eastern Baltimore County. The master plan places the Lafarge Quarry in that same category, which we believe is totally inappropriate. Right now, the property is zoned RC-8, which is resource conservation, as you are aware. And it is subject to a HUD that was introduced by an outgoing county council representative. It was opposed at the time it was introduced and is now in the process of facing revocation by the current county council. The 3 million square feet of warehouse and distribution suggested for that site under the bud is totally inappropriate for that area, not only because of its zoning, but because of its location and its proximity to the Erdle, as well as the Just Peak Bay, and the fact that it is served by totally inadequate transportation network. That site should be not designated for anything inconsistent with RC-8, and it should be a clear sleep for consideration
Thank you, Mr. Benler.
when the Middle River area plan is conducted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Benler. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Kathleen Skolny.
Ms. Skolny. Ms. Skolny, are you with us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you very much. My name is Kathleen Skolny. I'm the current president of the Greater Patapsco Community Association, which has been active since 1986. We represent a rural watershed and environmentally protected area of 19 square miles from the Erdle west and south of Randallstown, all the way to the Patapsco River, north to Marietsville, and south along the river with 1,600 households. We are now part of the Patapsco Heritage Greenway, and we are recognized by the Maryland Historical Trust. We have an adopted community plan and have actively participated in master plan processes since 2000. The new concept of the 2030 master plan, as Mr. Connor pointed out, makes it a little difficult to comment with specificity. However, one provision that we actively support is the 10-year CZMP instead of a resource draining four-year current cycle. The master plan is repeatedly presented as aspirational, but we wholeheartedly support and endorse the three themes and the six guiding principles that are set forth. But absent is, and the profound challenge is, how this aspiration becomes a reality. We would like to urge the board, and I'm running out of time here, to look to Article 32, Title II, Section 203 of the county code and include in the vision framework or the growth framework the specific requirements, in particular, that the six guiding principles become requirements that must be satisfied in all the processes that have to do with all of the activities covered by the master plan. And in particular, the 2024 CDM petitions must say how they satisfy all those principles.
Thank you, Ms. Skolny.
It might take 30 seconds to tell you that...
No, Ms. Skolny, but what you can do is if you want to send anything to the planning department, and they will make sure the board gets it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Skolny. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Steve Whalen.
Mr. Whalen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Madam Chair and members of the planning board, my name is Stephen W. Whalen, Jr. I am a commercial real estate developer in Catonsville, Maryland, have been doing this for 43 years. I appreciate the aspirational aspect of this master plan document and that it is not intended to focus on individual properties or zoning. However, certain important areas are painted with a very broad brush. UMBC is hardly mentioned, though it is a major anchor for southwest Baltimore County. Spring Grove Hospital across the street from it is 175 acres, is in transition, and the redevelopable area around it is also likewise not addressed. The overall area is lumped into a large tract on the map, which is in the restrictive established neighborhood category, which hardly accurately describes the redevelopment retrofitting opportunities available here. While I hope the small area plan will address these matters eventually, this area deserves recognition in the basic document because it is fundamentally important to our southwest Baltimore County community. The problem that we would run into in this situation is that we will have to deal with what the master plan document shows in any 2024 zoning issue that we would wish to raise but not had the opportunity timewise to address the small area plan by that point in time. Thank you very much. That's all I've got, other than to make the comment that I agree with earlier comments about the PDF report format that would make this document much easier to read than the way it's layered online right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whalen. Next speaker.
That is the last of our speaker sign-up list, Madam Chair. Ms. Brannick is sharing the screen right now. You could just go to Slide 1, just in case anyone has any last-minute chat comments. And turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so very much. Well, Ms. Bensley, you did a great job introducing everyone there, and this concludes our speaker registration list. Thank you, everyone that came out to speak tonight, and the planning board will take your comments into consideration. Now, are there any other comments at this time from the board, or do you have any questions? If there's no further questions or comments, this concludes our public hearing. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, June 1, 2023, and we will discuss the master plan for 2030. This meeting will be in person at 4:00 PM. The board will vote on the master plan 2030. It's at this time. At this time, it is scheduled for June 15, 2023. Do I have a motion to adjourn this hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, planning staff and planning board, for all your time in this matter. We appreciate everything that you give. So on that note, enjoy the rest of your evening.